Just briefly update you on 2009, on Ninth Street and on wayfinding. And then we'll move to 2010, talk about recertification briefly and the Greeley Avenue Bridge. So Dan, I'm gonna let you update where we're at. We know that Ninth Street's in a state of construction, but what your timeline is there and where you think we're at.
Okay. Ninth Street is in kind of a shutdown period right now for the holiday commerce to resume. There is a little bit of work going on out there, but it's been really snowy and too cold to do too much. But we might see some signal work being started over the course of the next few weeks. And then when January 4th rolls around, they'll be able to start working on other things again. But it's kind of subject to winter. So if we do have a winter this year that's of any coldness, we may not be doing a lot for a while. The end of the construction is estimated to be fall of 2010, so they're on schedule and shouldn't have any problem finishing by next year in the fall. There will be an art component, landscaping component to that project that will take place next year as well. And our Arts and Humanities Commission is working with a... Working on the process to get an artist hired to actually do whatever that art is gonna be. I'm not sure exactly where that process is, but I know they've been working on proposals to get an artist hired. So that will be another phase of that that will occur next year. Let's see, the wayfinding project, we did get some, a final sign mock-up into the office last Friday to be approved. Colors and making sure everything was correct on it. It's quite a process to put together these signs. They're pretty expensive signs and I guess in a little defense of the contractor, they are behind. But it just takes a lot of effort to make sure all the arrows are correct and the lettering is correct and the names are correct. And there's a hundred, I think a little less, around a hundred signs. It just took a long time to make sure everything was exactly right. And I'm not even arguing the fact that somebody may still find something wrong, but the hope is we've done our due diligence, because it has been a real challenge. So the signs should be installed in the next month, basically. They're supposed to arrive in the middle of January. So the, it's a small amount of concrete work that has to occur, so the contractor's not gonna have any trouble getting the signs up. It's just getting the signs here and making sure they all fit before we go out and start poking holes in the ground and making sure the weather's okay to do concrete work. Let's see, street initiatives also for this year. Number three there, we did quite a bit of milling overlay. We did some improvements to the Broadway medians, just to see how that would dress up that corridor. We did a lot of curb work in that area, as well as just normal asphalt work. But instead of leaving the old asphalt medians, we decided to try and take them out. And really got a pretty good price on that. It just made sense to do it. They were in disrepair and really just getting rid of the old medians and curb and some grass has really made it look a lot nicer than it was before. And then Parks will do some tree plantings over the course of time to make it even look better. So that's kind of a post or a template project to continue along Broadway as we improve medians through there. We're actually doing a median study to see which ones are necessary and which ones are not. BWR has done that for us, so we're reviewing that currently as well. Is that it for '29, I guess? I think, Dean?
Yeah, we're kind of in Phase One of the levy recertification, but could you just briefly talk about what we're doing there and also the Greeley Avenue Bridge and what may or may not happen there?
Okay. Yeah, 2010 levy certification. We have done a kind of initial analysis this year. We've spent around $65,000 just looking at some, our data and meeting with FEMA and the Corps to see where we are. And we did a levy, a levy walk with a geotechnical engineer and a hydraulic engineer, just to look and see what kind of shape our levies in. And so far, the initial findings have been good, but we will have to spend some money next year to actually do geotechnical analysis, stability analysis. And then the hydrology portion of it really hinges on these FEMA maps that are, they're kind of go hand in hand. If we get the FEMA maps to be close to accurate, then we can use a lot of that data with the levy recertification. We will still have to do at least that much engineering analysis, though, next year to probably get it certified. That is scheduled for over the next year, really. I think we'll hit it pretty hard. We should get a Phase One report back from our consultant, AMAC, in the next couple of weeks. It'll be into the year, basically, is what they've said. So that's coming up fairly quickly. So we'll have some options. They're gonna give us options with costs to proceed. So we'll have some options to evaluate and proceed with that, depending on the options and depending on what our FEMA partnership may look like. The Greeley Avenue Bridge, as Dean has referenced here, based on last night's approval for the river, Smokey River Master Plan, we've talked a little earlier in the year about, does that impact what size of bridge we should have there? And it really does. So as we halted progress on the Greeley Avenue Bridge design, trying not to get too far down the road before we know really what that size should be, there's a very, there's varying varieties of sizes. There's about 12 structures through the whole corridor, from girder bridges to CMP pipes. So there's a real big, there's a real large discrepancy depending on what improvements will have to occur in that, through the whole river channel. But then also what, how wide and how high we might want the clearance to be if we're gonna actually improve the channel to allow people to pass under it or trails to go through there and whatever other water flow and hydraulics as well. So Greeley Avenue Bridge is currently on hold and the design of it, we have to reevaluate what to do with that. KDOT money is good in 2011 anyway, so we have a little bit of time. So we'll kind of see what happens with this, with the river plan to see what options actually gain some momentum. And then we can, part of their scope is to help us with the size of a bridge that would be a typical bridge through the whole corridor. So we'll see how that impacts the Greeley Bridge at the time. We inspect that bridge every week and then after every rain. So it's, it is some staff time, as long as we don't fix it. There's some staff time involved, because it's not in the best shape, but so far, so good. It hasn't gotten any worse.
Could you explain a little bit about what that inspection involves?
Go underneath it and measure if there's been any differential settlement or any, any changes to what's there now. We've got pretty good pictures and hard numbers on this wall is here and this dirt is here and making sure we don't see any major changes to it, because it's, it is an old bridge and it's just something we have to keep an eye on until we, till we fix it. That was one of the big concerns, was it was delinquent, needed to be fixed as soon as possible. So we pretty well proceeded on that basis. And then now we're gonna have to reevaluate the size of it, so it could delay that some. And because of that, that's concerning to staff, but we will keep looking at it every week.
That's the one that's got the big steel plate on it.
That's correct, yep. And it's posted for just cars only. You can't take anything heavy across it. So that covers our liability some, as far as if no heavy trucks, no buses, nothing should be going across that bridge, other than a passenger car. That's, that's the way that we have to deal with delinquent or old bridges around the, around the country. That's the way that we have to deal with it. So that did have an impact, the master plan, and we'll see how that shakes out over the next six months.
And just how that relates, the contract that was approved last night calls for two joint City Commission, Planning Commission sessions with the master plan consultant. So sometime in the spring of next year, there'll be one and perhaps after that, in August or something, a second one. But they would be joint presentations from the consultants of Friends of the River to both the city and planning commissions at the same time. And their goal as consultants is to get a plan for the river corridor that you would review and adopt and make a part of the comprehensive plan. So that's why you would be included in that as well. And so we'll update you as that unfolds, but there are some things on the public input and process that will involve you as a planning commissioner on Friends of the River.
Will this be an addendum to the, to the comprehensive plan, or will this hold up?
No, it'll be an add-on, just like a few years back, we had the East Salina Master Plan. That was basically an adoption of an addendum or amendment or attachment to the plan. It doesn't, doesn't alter the original plan, it's just like a supplement to the plan for that specific area. Any, anytime you have a plan for the entire community, it's not unusual to have a more specific plan, either for the downtown area or for the river or something like that, that becomes part of it. So what we'd be looking for today is to look at levy recertification, the Greeley Avenue Bridge, the Fire Station Headquarters, the Bicentennial Center. And really, if you look at those for 2010, I think the one thing you can say about them is that they are investments that are really infill investments, that are investments that are made to the core part of the community. And so what you're being asked to review is to say if those investments are made in Fire Station Number One and the Bicentennial and the Greeley Avenue Bridge and in the levy, are those, in your view, consistent with our direction of our comprehensive plan? And so if you agree with that, then, then after reviewing this and asking any questions that you have, first thing would be to make a motion to endorse the 2010 project list. And the other thing is if you have any comments about those projects that are identified or, but unfunded or anything else, you can make any comments you have about projects you think are more important than others, and those would be reflected in your minutes. But what we'd be looking for is to look at the 2010 proposed list, and if you think those are consistent with the plan, then the resolution that's attached here, a motion should be made to approve that. And that would be given to the City Commission.
There's been a number transcribed, Dean? The Greeley Avenue Bridge is 360,000, not 630,000?
That would be trans...
Opposed, what do you call it?
That's our share, right?
No, you just have it on 2010 yet.
Okay, it's 360 with 270 being the KDOT grant.
Yeah, that's what Rod has in the following pages. I just wanted to make sure it's not gonna...
That would be a number that's transposed. I thought maybe you just wanted some extra money to cover.
Maybe you know more than I do. It's gonna be a long, that's be a pretty good sized bridge, if that's the case.
Cover the inspection costs.
Yeah.
That's what engineers call contingencies.
Just double it.
But that, that is correct. That was a transposed number, not intentional.
Any questions or comments on the capital improvement list?
I have a comment I wanted to mention. I particularly appreciate it. I read in the paper where the city made a commitment to get the South Ninth Street corridor open before the holiday season, and you were able to do that. I think that's commendable, and it certainly helps with the traffic problems down there, even though I know it slows construction down. That was, that was a good move, I think.
Yeah, we need to thank Smokey Hill, they did a really good job of that, because it wasn't, it was a wet fall, really. It wasn't easy to get that done, but they did, just in time.
Yeah, and that was, that was a good move. And then I wanted to ask, because I don't know, how are your capital improvement projects, your major infrastructure projects, how do they develop? Who does it? Does your department do that? Dean's department? I don't know in the city how those are determined, what priority they have and where they fall in the, in the year.
It's kind of an internal staff committee, but some, some of it, if it, if it's tied to outside financing, that will dictate it. But the one thing that Dan and I both observed is this is the soonest we've ever done it for the following year. A lot of times, you'd be looking at February, late February or something, for the 2010 plan. Well, then that, if Dan has projects, that delays them getting off the ground. But by having this plan in place and getting it approved, then that allows the 2010 projects to get launched a little sooner. But there's a internal staff committee that goes through these, looks at the finances, looks at the manpower, and then reshuffles the priorities, makes that recommendation, and then you, as a planning commissioner, review it, and the City Commission decides whether to make it part of the budget.
For example, East Magnolia is just more of a priority at this point than South Ninth, based on traffic volumes and just development, really, at this point.
I was really glad to see that.
They kind of were on the same track for a few years, but we did put in for both of them, or we submitted both projects to KDOT for funding, and then we did, we did receive some funding for East Magnolia. So that was a good, that makes, that makes the most sense for us. And so to answer your question, Ken, it's really a, kind of where is development headed? And where, this group is pretty instrumental in that, too. East Salina and East Magnolia is kind of where the development's going at this point.
And the bridge, the bridge belongs to the county or...
Correct.
The bridge and then, and then the road beyond that is county road?
Yes.
And they have nothing in their plans about replacement of...
No, not, not at this time. The bridge is in pretty good shape. It has a, I'm not sure how old the surfacing or the, they redecked it or did some overlay on it, I know, in the past 10 or 15 years, and it's in pretty good shape. But no, that's actually an internal discussion we're having or going to have with the county as far as the jurisdiction of that road and how far should that go? And that's one thing they've requested us look at over the next year, actually, to enter local agreement, all of our perimeter roads, and that's really one of the main, that Markley and Egg Magnolia being the two probably the most notable at this point, and then Holmes as well.
I have one other question, if I may. Does, does the levy recertification have anything to do with the reauthorization of the FEMA maps? Are they, they have to be timed together? In other words, it'll take a while to certify the levy, so does that mean the FEMA maps will not be official until the levy's recertified?
The FEMA, the FEMA maps will have a caveat on them that says...
What they call a POW note.
Provisionally accredited levy. And so if our levy does not get certified, then over the course, after those maps get finalized, then they take those maps and redraw them with no levy, basically, if the, if the levy doesn't get certified. So that's, it's a process that takes a long time, but it's, we won't see any reason that shouldn't, we shouldn't get the thing certified.
That's their incentive.
Yeah, has a lot of incentive to the city and to the taxpayers in this community to make sure it gets certified.
Definitely.
So are the FEMA people here now doing surveys and, I mean, they check all that or they just use old maps? They recheck everything, like heights and elevations and...
They did some. I guess that was in 2006 and '07, I believe. That was the last time they were here.
What the work that's been done is primarily because the technology with aerial photography and digital contours and things like that, they've basically taken the old maps and dressed them up with better contours and, and things of that nature. But in terms of doing a full-blown re-study of the city of Salina, they, they have not done that.
We required them, or we paid them to do some extra study along the slough, Old Smokey River, South Ohio.
Magnolia Road ditched out by Central Mall.
So we did pay extra money to have them do some of that exact thing, but not, the majority of it is not new surveys and new mapping. It's just putting it on to more updated contours. And that's kind of one of our disputes, is some of the data seems to have changed, and we're not sure exactly why. So we're still, still working with them on that. And those are calculations that are done where at, Dean? Somewhere far away.
Yeah.
Far, far away.
Yeah. Dean's working with them on the 1700 Lomas and map changes that we have, so that's also a big challenge for him as well.
Wait, I'm going to make a motion that we endorse the 2010 project list as recommended by staff.
Second. Moved and seconded to adopt the, approve, or approve the project list, and does that, should that motion also include that we...
You can authorize or approve the resolution, which essentially does that.
Okay.
And what, what that means, Patrick's, we'll have a resolution over here that just, you can sign and summarizes your action today, and we'll pass that along to the City Commission.
So your motion...
My motion would include approve the resolution.
And second, okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the project list and adopt the resolution number 09-9. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
With the caveat, that will change the $630,000 to 360 for Dan. The second item is that we were asked, at least where the discussion was leading, and on the conservation area was, the sense we got was to leave the map as it is. And John, I don't know if, in order of things, I guess the first thing to do is to start with the map. And then we've got a slide that kind of depicts floodway, floodplain situations. But at least the direction that we sensed was to leave the boundaries and everything on the map unchanged, and to come back with some potential, what we, you would call exemption or amendment criteria. And so the wards indicated they couldn't be here, but we probably met with them, oh, maybe over a dozen times so far. This is their property right here. This is the, the reason that the city limit boundary is right here is because it was anticipated that nothing in this area at Stemwell in Ohio would ever develop, and so there wasn't any reason that none of that property would benefit from any utilities or anything, because nothing could be built or developed there. So this line here is the floodway boundary. This is floodplain. So these, these outer fringe areas are floodplain, and the darker, which gets harder to see every time, the kind of lime sherbet, is the floodway. And so we've got some area out on, oh, West State Street, North Street in there, those areas that, where this area here is, is floodway, closer to the levy, and then out here is floodplain. So we've summarized, again, what, what the plan says, which we want to summarize two things. It is a plan. So when you adopt a plan, a plan is not law, a plan is advisory. So a plan doesn't take away somebody's development rights, but something that gets implemented through the plan. And I guess my example would be in 1986, the city joined the federal flood insurance program, and FEMA said, if you want to be part of this program and be eligible, you must adopt this ordinance, which prohibits development in the floodway. So that, that is an ordinance that actually prohibits this. What this is saying is that you, as a planning commissioner and the city commission and the county planning commission and county commission, should protect these natural areas and, and keep them designated as conservation areas and to be used for conservation and agricultural use. Now what their implementation step is to say, create a conservation zoning district that prohibits development within conservation areas as defined by the plan, including floodplain areas within and surrounding the community. So step one is, they're saying, adopt the plan. Step two is that if you adopt this conservation area, then step two is come back with a conservation overlay district or a conservation area district and zone this, all for that, and what, so it's, just adopting this to, as a map, doesn't take away people's rights. The other thing to note is that if you are the wards and you own this property there and it's agricultural and it's in the county, they don't have any inherent right to develop it today. So this, this conservation area could be completely off the table, and that still doesn't mean that they have the right to develop it with a shopping center or get any specific zoning or anything. You don't have a, you're not losing anything if you have agricultural land and it's not rezoned to something else, because you still have the agricultural use. So what we tried to do was look at, are there some criteria or something that you could come up with to say, I own this property, I have interstate exposure, I would like to develop that and have somebody put a trucking warehouse there, and you've got me in the conservation area. Is there any things that could be looked at to exempt me out of that and consider my land for development? And the three things that we came up with on page two of your report there was, well, if you come in and you've got elevation data that shows that the map, the flood map's wrong, and I'm really not in a floodplain, floodplain or flood-prone area based on elevation, that might be an exemption to allow you to develop, because you're not actually by elevation in a flood-prone area. The other criteria that could be applied is, well, the city has put utilities at my doorstep already, they've already made an investment, why can't I utilize that investment to allow me to develop my site? And the third criteria could be that I historically had some development rights in Saline County through zoning and plating and other things, and so you, as a city of Salina, need to recognize those rights, and those take, those should take priority over the conservation area. So what that is designed to do is to say, you leave this area intact as it is on the map. Somebody comes in and has a project in one of these areas on, on West North Street, and they come in and say, I'd like to rezon or I'd like to plat my property for development. And then you would look, as a commission, you would look at this and say, are they above or below the flood elevation? And if they're three feet below and they need to bring in a bunch of fill, then probably that doesn't help. Are there any public utilities available that the city's already invested in to serve the site? If the answer's no, and there's not likely to be any extensions, then that's probably not good. And if it's zoned agricultural and has never had any rezoning or plating, that probably doesn't help. And so the answer ought to be no. This is not development land, this is conservation land. But if one of those three things is present, or a landowner can demonstrate that, then maybe that would serve as an ability to go in and take one of these parcels and develop it, but still develop it in accordance with good floodplain management techniques. John, I think we had the one slide that showed the floodplain and floodway. I guess we'd have to blow that up. But we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but if you, and we don't have many of these in this situation in Salina, that most of ours is backwater flooding, not stream flooding. But if, if you go in and you start encroaching or filling these floodplain areas, bringing it up with fill or whatever, and you're, you're crimping down the, the floodway area, it means when you have a flood, that if all this is filled or developed, it's more likely that the flood elevation's gonna go from here up to here. And I know Dan experienced that in Overland Park, where you had areas that were pasture or agricultural land, they developed up to the edge of a stream, and all of a sudden, the floods on that stream were at a higher elevation than they ever were before.
Yeah, as Dean talked about here, though, it's quite a bit different, because we have such low, flat areas where it just doesn't look like a corridor like that. We don't, it's, it's spread out over square miles of just, you know, foot to two-foot, three-foot deep water. So it just, it's a different situation here, and it's probably enough harder to deal with or not, but it's just unique. So that picture doesn't represent all of our situation here in Salina. There's some areas that we actually have fall, which would be east of Mag, or east of Merrymount, all the way up to Country Club Road through there. There's some houses near the stream, and that is an area... There's some houses near the stream and that is an area along Estates and East Borough where it does look somewhat like that. So, we have, we have problems in those areas. But a lot of ours is more backwater related, like Dean said, which is just, water just backs up and just floods low areas than actual encroaches and goes through a channel more like that shows.
What are the implications then for that map when they're designated in the county? What are the implications for us? I mean, the wards are in the county.
Right. But most, I think, in what we're trying to lean to through our inter-local agreement and if you had an ideal planning agreement, you would not be able to play the planning, the county off against the city. Because if I'm Crestwood Cabinets and I'm in Saline County, not in the city, I still need, generally, I need sewer and I need water for use and for fire protection. And that doesn't go away just because I'm in the city or not in the city. So, if I take a property out, you know, northwest of town or on North Ohio and there's, there's no sewer service, there's no water at all for fire protection, that's probably not a good location in any event. And if we're doing our job right, the county's planning would be consistent with our own that says, whether you develop in the city or county, you've got a big warehouse here. You need fire protection. So, if you don't have utilities, that's not a good place for a warehouse. And so, it ideally shouldn't matter. And most of this property that we're discussing is in the county, but if you're the wards and you want to put anything of a commercial nature there, you're going to have to annex into the city and you'll be the ones that will be discussing it anyway. And so, the two approaches here, if you look at the minutes from the last meeting, the summarization, I think Mr. Wilson, who owns property out on State Street and some others, would like to see the conservation area limited to the mapped floodway only. So, would the wards, so would a lot of other people who are floodplain but not floodway properties. But it's, if you can go back to that, John, it's, it's hard to argue, if you looked at photographs from the 2007 floods, that these areas are not flood prone because they are. If you go out West State Street in 2007 and look north and south, almost everything out there was underwater. So, some of it's more damaging and moving floodwater than others, but it's underwater nonetheless.
And your three staff recommendations, under, under those, the wards still would not be able to develop that land?
Well, no, I think, as when I talked to them, I think they hit two out of the three. There, we looked at the elevation with them earlier. I think they're two to three feet above the flood elevation because you have Kenworth and Foley Tractor there that are developed and their land is higher than either of those two properties because the water actually drains back this way. And so, the ground actually gets lower as you get towards the interchange and higher here, then it gets lower again, but it's actually a crown right here. And then, the city has invested utilities in Ohio. And also, there's a 12-inch water line in North Fifth Street that serves the Gold Road Tower. And so, I think by elevation and by presence of utilities, one of the things they didn't like about the language was that it says availability of utilities and it says, well, it doesn't say how close you have to be. And as soon as you said you have to be 600 feet, somebody's going to be at 750 feet and probably could be served. So, I don't, I, I think the availability is still a better, more flexible language than putting a prescribed amount in there. But all that being said, I think Mr. Chris is here, represents Mr. Wilson and the wards there, say, "Well, we've looked at your criteria, but what we really want is for the conservation area just to be the floodway and not any bigger." So, that's, that's really what we see is the two alternatives is, except for the two errors we pointed out, one of which is right here, which is an omission. That should be green. The tank farm there at State Street. And then, John, if you could go, let's see, farther south. The Nordbo property is right here and there's actually a piece of that there out on West Magnolia that's not in any kind of flood zone. And therefore, we, it's never been in a flood zone and it shouldn't be colored green. So, they've asked that this be, that that be corrected. So, this white would actually extend over into here a little bit. Those are, those are technical map fixes, but as I see it, those are your, your two choices you have in making a recommendation is to, to say, take all this yellow-green off of there and pinch it down to there, which is right back to the floodway, or leave it as it is and then deal with exceptions or amendments based on some criteria that people would have to demonstrate to you before they could do development on their conservation area property.
Is this whole comprehensive plan has been based largely on public opinion, sir? I believe you-
I just wanted to ask a couple of questions.
Come forward, state your name and your address and address the commission.
Harold Morrison, 1605 North Ohio. And my mother's trust owns the land just north of the dock-
Just outside the levee here.
On Ohio Street.
Is that right in here?
Right there, uh-huh, uh-huh. And, and my home sits almost right on the floodway. But what determines, how you determine the floodway and the floodplain separation? I mean, did you do this off of surveying figures or is it-
It's based on historical flooding records and also about whether the flooding that occurs is, is caused by moving water or backwater and also by the, the presence of the levee. If you go back and talk with the fire department about 2007 and North Fifth Street, one thing they learned is that they didn't have enough boats and boats with motors because they were rescuing people from homes. And there was a lot of current that they were fighting with the floodwaters up here on Stemel and Fifth Street because the reason that this band is floodway here is because what happens in a flood is that Mulberry Creek comes up here. Besides, it's too much work to go under the interstate to get up here and Mulberry Creek just goes right-
Cuts across.
-that way. And so, this, this is floodway because that's a channel of moving water if you have a hundred year flood event. And so, this-
It gets to the Ohio Street Dam there.
This is, this is there based on that. And what it's saying is, is you get closer down here to the levee, you might have backed up water from that, but not moving water through here. So, your house is closer to the levee, isn't it?
I'm a quarter of a mile off.
So, you've got some area here closer, but this is the area of moving water.
Yeah, no, I'm, my questioning was just, how did you, how it was determined on what-
It was based, it's based on the patterns of where there's a channel of moving water as opposed to just standing or backup water.
Is there any way we can dynamite Ohio Street and open up? No, I'm being facetious, but Ohio Street does create a problem because it forms a nice dam there.
Yeah, there's not really a culvert or a bridge or anything.
There's a culvert at, two culverts at Stemel, three further south, and there's no way they can handle the volume of water.
Yeah, they're not, they're not sized to handle the branch of Mulberry Creek-
No.
-that becomes when you actually have a flood.
Yes, sir. And I was just curious on how, whether you had actual elevation shot, you know, figures on that or-
Well, I do, I don't have it with me, but-
Oh, that's fine.
-in 2007, the city staff was able to get a helicopter to go up and shoot photographs of flooding. And right in this location, there was a channel of moving water right through here that was right in that location and just about matched that in width. And so, these maps are, in terms of floodway and floodplain, are pretty accurate in that regard.
Yeah, but I was just curious on, because I have not had it surveyed in the last-
Yeah, I, I mean, the, it get, the land gets a little higher closer to the levee-
Yes.
-but it's, it's more a fact that the stream cuts through here and based on the volume of water, it gets this wide and not any wider. Doesn't spread any more than that.
Thank you. One error on the pink sheet there, it says Jim Wood, I think, instead of Jim Ward in your minutes.
Okay.
Oh, it did.
Yes, it does say James Wood.
Thank you.
Could you go back down to the Nordbo property that you were talking about? That's a dark green, is that right?
Yes.
So, why is there no floodplain around that?
What happens is that this-
You excuse me. I have to-
This is a floodplain area here along the creek.
Let's start pumping some air.
And then, right here, because of this railroad bridge and because of the overpass here, but primarily because of the bridge, this is like a dam. And the water in a flood situation cannot get through here, so it dams up and backs up and floods that area. But what the map shows is that it doesn't get up in here by elevation. This is higher and that should not be in.
Okay.
And that, it shows that way on the 86 map and the new map. And it's, the property has never been historically part of a floodplain. And so, really, this should be white here and then the property up on State Street that's white should be green because it's, it always has been in the floodplain.
Was your question whether that should be yellow?
Well, it, it just seems interesting that, that you have pockets of floodway with no floodplain around it.
Correct. Yeah, I wonder, is there, is there no distinguishing there, Dean, between the actual, the smaller floodway and the larger floodplain backwater?
No, it's all floodway because the, usually you have floodway and then some flood fringe around it, but here, you've got the interstate and you've got an elevated railroad track.
Okay.
And those are, you have to envision this, that this is like a big pond and it's, it's got high banks on all sides of it, so there's no floodplain with it.
Okay, that'll work.
Dean, well, I guess first of all, is there, Mr. Chris, would you care to address the commission?
I just have a couple of questions. Terry Chris, I'm an attorney with Hampton and Royce. We represent the Wilsons. Dean, could you, could you tell me on the, on the third criteria where, of the, of the exception that you were talking about, are there identified areas in the county at this point that you already know meet that third criteria?
The third criteria, what we do know is that we have areas, particularly out in the west there, including Mr. Wilson's property, that are zoned industrial. The, what we don't have a better handle on is what is zoned industrial and actually is platted or part of a historical plat. My interpretation would be that Mr. Wilson has this property here. It's zoned industrial, but in order to actually develop it, under the county's code and the city's code, he would have to plat it even if he just platted it into one big lot. And so, what, what this would say is, Mr. Wilson comes in with a plat. He's got industrial zoning. Is his natural elevation of his land above the flood elevation? No. Does he have any city utilities available? No. And then, the next question is, is there some development right that the county has conferred on him that we can't take away? If it is in fact true that it's never been platted, then it's not conferred a development right by the county. If it is platted, if it's part of some historical plat, then he could probably make a case that I'm, I was platted and zoned before any of this took place and I'm in the floodplain where you can build if you elevate. So, therefore, we would be taking away some development right that's already conferred. And so, I think the operative question, the next step is to figure out what of those areas, particularly in the west, that the county has zoned industrial, what of those have actually been platted? But if you have property in the county that's platted and zoned industrial, you've got a right to build some industrial use there. If you still have to go through some approved development review in order to get a building or some development there, then you don't have a vested right. So, I think the question is, is what parts of those areas to the west there have been part of some historical plat?
And the, the area to the, to the west is the, is the main area that kind of fits within that-
Yeah, we, we, we did a map. It's not this map, but a different one that showed what of these areas did the county and a lot of this area out here, the county has, since the 50s, been zoned industrial. They basically said, "This is a railroad track, so either side of that, so many feet, we'll just make industrial." So, that's been sitting out there since the 50s. The question is, do you have that zoning plus a plat or something else from the county that gives you that right to build something without going before any board or commission? And so, I guess that would be the next step, to take that map plus the zoning map and see what of those, I mean, this is our animal shelter. It's not platted. There's quite a bit of land out here that's not on State Street, but there, there are some areas up, up to the north that have some surveyors' plats on them. So, I guess that would be my answer. As I look at the criteria, is that in order to be, have some development right, you'd need to be zoned, platted and, and be eligible for some building permit right now, today. Or demonstrate that you were incorrectly shown in based on elevation.
And, and the elevation that, you, you referred to the natural elevation.
Mm-hmm.
If land is in the process of being filled, do you, do you still base this on the natural elevation or on the elevation-
Well, that's, that's the way, existing elevations is the way it's worded in the exemption criteria, primarily because if you're naturally or your existing elevations are above, that means you probably were incorrectly put in the floodplain the first time. But if you go out and fill, you are artificially altering the floodplain, so you're probably going to have more impact. But it is correct as to Mr. Wilson that he's got industrial zoning. He has a permit from the county to fill and elevate that. He had a plat that he filed in 2000 that was never approved or finalized. And I guess the question is whether any of his property or other properties out there are part of an existing plat. Because if, if he could go down to the county planning and zoning office and get a, a zoning permit to build something there that didn't involve the city, then we wouldn't, we wouldn't be involved in that anyway. That's going to be administered solely through the county. But where we get involved is where plating takes place.
At this point, you've not identified specific properties that already fall within that third criteria? You just kind of have an idea as to what the-
We have an idea of what area. I know that these areas out here west that are outside the city limits on Grand and North and State and out into here are zoned industrial. I guess it'd be the next step to figure out if they're platted or not.
Okay.
But my initial thought- But my initial thought on, the one on State Street, would be that it wouldn't fit any of those three criteria here. And then, he talked about this property over here at Fairchild and State. And I'm pretty sure that doesn't meet any of those three criteria either. So, I think that's really where, where it comes down to is whether you, as a commission, feel comfortable adopting this map with that conservation area with some exemption criteria or, um, you want to shrink it down to match floodway only.
I don't have anything further. Thank you.
But we will follow up with that, Terry, and get a map that shows plating versus non-plating, um, so we can ed, get our, educated ourselves and be on the same page with the county.
Any questions or comments?
Just to summarize for, if, if this is designated conservation area, then unless it meets one of those three criteria, it basically has no hope of ever being developed outside of?
Outside of the uses here that are listed, like recreational uses or farming or open space. Um, you know, obviously, if you're farming the floodplain, you can do that forever. But, um, in terms of looking at other uses or intensification of the use, and it involves some application that would come before this body, what you'd have here is staff saying, "Here's the application. Here's what it says on the plan." The plan would tend to tell you that this should not be developed.
That's still, they'd still be able to apply the?
Yes, anybody can apply for anything. And again, the, the, if, if the thought was, "We'll, we'll adopt it, but after we adopt it, we'll just ignore it when applications come before us," then you probably shouldn't adopt it in the first place.
Right.
And so, that's, that's why we're having so much of this discussion up front is, is to say, um, "Do you really mean it?"
Well, the commissions that follow this one understand that.
Right. And that it was, it's not like you didn't know what you were doing when you adopted. And that's the main thing is, "Oh, if we'd have known that, we wouldn't have adopted it." Well, we're trying to make sure you know what the different implications are.
I, uh, I, I agree with actually all three. And I, and I hate to get into property-specific stuff, but let, let's use Mr. Wilson's as an example. Um, yeah, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit vague on the confirmed of some development rights. You, you had mentioned that he had got a permit for raising the, um, elevation of that. Is that correct?
He has a permit to, what I understand, he has a development fill permit through Saline County that allows him to have people dump soil or clean rubble on the site in order to raise its elevation.
That also comes through the state division of?
Water Resources.
Well, I, I guess, in my mind, I, that predisposes that, that there's gonna, that that is for some development. Would that be an occurrence that would happen in, in something that would be solely industri, or solely agricultural?
Well, I think that's a factor that you could take into account. My understanding, he's got like 34 acres in there and he's working on raising about six. So, if you had an application in front of you from him to do some development on six acres or something there that had been elevated, I think that you could, you could interpret that to say, "Well, he's already invested money to fill and elevate this based on the rules that were in place at the time." And the county allowed him to do that. Why would the county allow him to do that if they didn't envision that as some sort of development property? Because normally, you wouldn't go out and elevate land that you're just going to farm.
I agree. Um, how, what percentage has been elevated to this point?
I think around six of 34 acres.
Oh, okay.
That's what I understand.
Okay.
And, and again, I hate to, to use, or I mean, identify specific properties for something in the comprehensive plan. And I, and I do agree that the, the goal of this comprehensive plan is to, you know, have guidelines for future commissions on this very thing. So, um, for me personally, in the, in the, in the scope of that, I, I could agree to those three, um, with that, with that language in there.
Yeah, I think the main thing for us is if there's no comfort level in, um, adopting this as proposed, then obviously, staff working with Gould Evans or ourselves would have some work to do to redo this map, which is fine, but we just need to know. And so, that's, that's why I, what I've been sensing is that we haven't got any urging or direction to go in here and just whack all this off and, and pinch it down to there. And so, the map, the other thing, and it's not binding on you, but the county has adopted this map as part of their plan, just as it is. So, for coordination purposes, having that boundary the same in both jurisdictions is probably helpful. But we thought the exemption criteria would also be helpful with decision-making.
I have one more question. You had talked about i- if in fact that it met one of these criteria, then whatever occurred on that would have to be done with best practices? Do they have a, a definition of what, how the building?
Dan's going to help us with that, but we have been working with, there's, in, in the world of, of erosion control and stormwater pollution prevention, there's all kinds of best management practice manuals out there. And that's probably what we will end up doing and, and bringing back to you in, in some form, just for endorsement, is to, is to have a, a best management practices for develop, I mean, if you're in Salina, Kansas, or Saline County, you're going to have some development in the floodplain. But if we have some best management practices, then you can minimize the negative impacts of that. And so, I think that's something that we'll work with Dan on, to have some best, not just can you develop in the floodplain, but how you develop in the floodplain.
Is that any language we need to include here?
If, if you want to say, "This, these three criteria are nice, but we'd like to see some, um, example of what you mean by best management practices presented to us," then we will do that.
Well, I, I think your graphic that you had up there of the, the, the stream and then the, the floodplain way is, is pretty, uh, graphic in nature. And I think, like Mr. Kennedy, that if, if development does need to occur, I think that there needs to be an offset in the, in the floodplain. Um, you know, through, and I, I know we had talked about throwing some numbers around, like one-to-one and, and that type of thing. If you're going to build up, leave a, a vacated area in that, that same, uh, quantity, but...
Yeah, Dan's, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of different ideas out there. And a lot of it has to do with, if you're in the floodplain, just develop part of it and leave the rest natural. I mean, we have all kinds of artificially constructed detention basins that are nicely sloped and, and manicured grass and all that. But, you know, there's, there's ways to do detention that just leaves areas natural. And just develop part of the property and leave the rest available for storage. And so, there's some things in that direction I think we can come back with you at, on.
It seems like then, language that would say if, if property meets any one of these criteria and development is approved, that that development must also then?
Be done according to some adopted criteria, whether we call it best management practices for floodplain development or something like that. We could certainly add that to say if, if the property meets these three, three criteria and is allowed to develop, then it must be developed in accordance with, um, best management practices for floodplain development.
Yeah, because then I can see, see the requests coming in for a structure or development that, um, will only make things, after giving them permission under one of these and then the lands are?
Will actually make things worse, not neutral.
Yeah.
And we want them to be at best neutral.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes, development can improve a situation if you do compensating improvements.
Mm-hmm.
So, we, we could certainly, and you're not, this is not adoption of these criteria right today.
Yeah.
It's mostly to say, "Do you want to take this approach or do you want us to tear up the map?"
No.
I wish Mr. Householder were here so I could, so he could hear me say that I agreed with his.
Don't encourage him.
I think that map is very accurate, too. I mean, that's had a lot of?
I, I think people would have a hard time arguing that those areas that are covered there don't flood.
Don't have.
It's the nature and the degree of flooding. But I, I'd be pretty hard to argue to say, "Well, those areas never flood." Because they do.
Well, in, in my opinion, you know, we've, we've looked at this pretty extensively. We've come up with some, some livable, uh, plans for people that already own property that can be affected by this. And then, we've also taken a responsible, uh, viewpoint and included language for responsible development of it. So, for me, it, it would work like that.
Yeah, I think in addition to having the, any development meeting, best management practices for floodplain development, the two other things that we would need to do is make sure we're on the same page with the county as far as what, what they agree with the definition of property that has development rights. And then, do a little bit more research to see what properties actually platted or not platted.
Mm-hmm.
Because?
At this point.
At this point. Because even under the county's own rules, if I'm sitting out there with industrial property and it's not platted, I can't get a building permit to build on it. It has to be platted. So, um, you don't have development rights till you have a plat, but we need to make sure we're on the same page there.
Well, and I think Mr. Chris's point about what do you mean by development rights? I don't know if that needs to be, if, if you're talking specifically about plating, if there are other criteria that meet the definition of development rights?
Well, and along with this, what we owe Mr. Chris and others to say, development rights means?
Yes.
If you have this, this, and this, you have development rights. So, that's the next step.
Right.
That's why we have attorneys.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this? Well, Dean, we'll be looking forward to seeing the next episode of future land use.
So...
Just wants you, just makes you want to stay on the commission?
It does.
Just to see what's going to happen.
I'm sure people are signing up for it.
Well, what, related to this is, is two things, which we think, I mean, if, if this, if we get the, these different things neatly wrapped up here, um, we could be in a potential position. And again, just because the planning commission, you say, "Okay, we agree, we're far enough along, we understand this well enough, we're willing to hold a public hearing on this." Just because you hold a public hearing doesn't mean you have to do something at that hearing. It just means you're holding a public hearing. So, we, we could be in a position where sometime the end of January, you would feel comfortable having a public hearing, official public hearing on the plan. And that part of January is also where we might be looking to have a, um, public informational meeting on the new flood maps. And so, I said, a, a lot of what's in the plan and the flood maps and the levy recertification and Friends of the River, all those things are, are all tying together. So, um, that, that could work out from a timing standpoint. But we'll have a little more information for you just to look over at your meeting on the 5th and also the Cypress Street item. Um, but what main thing we need in terms of action here is the way I've, I've interpreted it is, leave the map as it is, um, add some language about, um, if development does occur, meaning, um, best manager practices for floodplain development, which we will develop with Mr. Stack. And also, um, to come to agreement with Saline County and also by definition of what is meant by "I have development rights." Because as we explained, and as I explained to the wards, you have agriculture land in the county that's zoned agricultural. You don't have development rights except to farm. And the only rights you get is what either the Saline County or Salina City Commission confer to you.
Is everyone in agreement with?
Sir?
Yes.
I mean, what you just said on Jim and Tony, but if they request to go to a different zoning?
Right.
They, they, they still have that right.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yeah, they're not, they're not precluded from doing that. But what, what this is saying is, when, when they come in, we're going to pull this map out and put it up there and say, "Should they be allowed to develop this property?" And pull out the three criteria and say, "Which of these do you meet?"
Why such a big white area where the flying J and that is all developed?
Because?
It's all raised.
That, that's all annexed and the city has up?
But it's not developed.
Well, those, those lands, those properties, every one of them is subject to assessment for water and sewer. And that, if, if we assessed a property for water and sewer and then told them they couldn't use it, that's where we get into our definition of development rights, where these people have develop, this is not working, they have development rights. And so, if, if they get an assessment for $50,000 for water and sewer to benefit the development of their property, and then we say, "You can't develop it," that is a problem.
But I, I would just?
But nobody outside of that white box there has those kind of development rights today.
But part of that is still in the flood?
Some of it is in floodplain, yes.
Thank you.
The flying J, part of that's in floodplain. And also, where Foley and Kenworth are.
And motorcycles off.
Yep.
Thank you.
Is there consensus then on those items?
Yes.
Melissa, we've got that stack of letters that's over there behind Dan from Mr. Eckhold. Could you distribute those up front there? This is another matters item, but it's ahead of our other matters because this is a voting item. And what we had was in November 2008.
Thank you.
You reviewed and approved a preliminary plat for what was called Magnolia Commons Edition, which was southwest corner of I-135 Magnolia Road. And you saw a plan for a Menards store along with other development there. After your meeting, for a couple of reasons, that went into hiatus. And what we have is a requirement that says that if you have a preliminary plat, that preliminary plat is valid for 12 months. And if you don't do anything with it within that 12-month period, it goes away, it loses its validity. And we're at that point, but what they'd like to do is, there's been a lot of work done on this, they'd like to pick the project up where they left off. And so, they, I believe are ready to pick the project back up. And what they're asking you for today is a 12-month extension. According to what they should have done is by now, they should have had a final plat to you, um, for final plans for development utilities, all that. What they're asking for is a 12-month extension from now until this time, December 10th, to complete the final plating process without starting over.
But this says November 4th, 2009. But this says November 4th, 2009. Does that mean 2008?
It meant 2008. That was a -- well, we're just doing good at typos today, aren't we?
They might have changed that. I think I have 2008 in there.
Okay. But it was--
Give you credit for it.
I mean, if you go back, it was November 4th, 2008 that you looked at it and had a hearing. And so what they're asking for is to go from now till this point, 2010, to have that window to complete the process. Otherwise, they would start over with a new preliminary plat, new zoning application, new annexation. You recommended that additional property be annexed, you recommended that it be rezoned, and you recommended approval of the preliminary plat layout. If you approve this extension, then they can pick up where they went into hiatus as opposed to starting over.
This is in your doughnut hole area out there.
This is the doughnut hole, yes.
And is there anything that we have learned in the last year that -- information that we need to know to preclude?
There really isn't any change what -- there were a couple of things that came up. There are some monitoring wells out there for the plume that's out by the airport area, but that plume doesn't get into this area. And so the presence of monitoring wells caused some nervousness. Economic conditions caused some nervousness. There was a project in Manhattan that was occurring at the same time, and that went into hiatus also. And so I think this, they would just -- what the action would be, would be a motion to grant Magnolia Commons a six-month -- or 12-month extension to complete the plating process.
There's no downside for you administratively, is there?
No, because there -- I mean, my main concern was, are you changing anything? Because if you're changing a whole bunch of things, and it needs to -- the planning commission needs to see it, they're not really changing. They're adjusting one lot line, which is natural in any project like this, which will be addressed, you'll see the final plat anyway, but the use, the site plan, the no other known users at this time, the layout of the streets, how drainage is addressed, none of those things that you recommended have really changed. And so we were dealing with multiple landowners, and it just from -- for us, it's easier to take the applications and that information that's already filed and just pick it up than to start over, but it's your discretion.
Seems to me to be a reasonable request. I'd make a motion that we approve their request for a 12-month extension.
Seconded. And moved and seconded to approve an extension for 12 months in regards to the preliminary plat of the Magnolia Commons Edition. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None being heard, motion carries.
We had, under other other matters--
Other other.
We have two things. One was a goal to address this year that, just like electronic signs, we keep learning stuff every day, and perhaps all three of these will mesh together for us, but we did -- Mr. Householder's not here, but it was a high priority for him, and that is the question of doing something with our -- you have the handout there. One could say that Salina's progressive because we've had wind energy conversion allowance for that for 30 years, but the way that they're written, nobody can comply with them and actually put one anywhere, so it's really not much good to have them on the books. So what we would propose to do is to get your -- we haven't actually initiated a text change to take this apart and substitute something better, so we would ask for your authorization to do that. And then we've also had been looking at our ordinances, and we have somewhat of a specialized district for the hospital and the hospital medical. We have one for university, for Kansas Wesleyan, K-State, Salina, those type of uses. But we really don't have one that fits the model of the educational facilities that are elementary, secondary, and the various administrative aspects of that. And so two things we'd like to request your authorization for is to move forward with or initiate a text change to the wind energy conversion ordinance to make it actually usable and reflect updates to technology. I think the main issue there, or issues, are going to be height, height, and height. And because we were reading some material, and it said the biggest mistake that homeowners or whether it's a school district or a church make when they try to do self-powered wind turbines, not the kind you see at the wind farms, but just one that would power a single site, is it's too short. And the second biggest mistake they make is it's too short, and the third biggest mistake they make is that it's too short. And I guess the problems I see with that are aesthetic and safety, and then the third one is just fairness. I mean, we have a pretty elaborate process that you have to go through if you want to put up a 120-foot cell tower, monopole. Okay? If I want to put up a 120-foot wind turbine in my yard, and I just have to walk in and get a permit and put one up in my yard by right, my neighbors may not appreciate it for one thing, and then the second aspect of that is, well, if I'm in the business of putting up cell towers and I have to go through this big process to do it, and this guy over here can put up something that looks and acts very similar and doesn't have to go through any process, then you start getting into fairness questions. So we, I think we want to be encouraging and allow for, you know, whether it's a church or school or a homeowner, to look into having their own wind energy conversion systems, but we're going to have to balance that with the rights of neighbors. And so we'd like to come up with something there. And I think, and I'm sure Ken has experienced this more times over since he's been here than not, but, you know, we use our residential R1 zoning for our schools. Well, they just don't have the same characteristics. They're usually in residential neighborhoods, but they don't have the same characteristics of a house. So when it comes to signage and accessory uses and all the different things that associate with education, the R1 district doesn't cut it very well, and that even reflects on our discussion with signs and things of that nature. So I guess the two things we'd like you to authorize us to look at are, one, the wind energy conversion systems, and two, developing some, whether we call it an educational facilities district or something like that, that would have rules that would fit educational facilities better, still understanding that they fit within a residential setting, but not trying to apply residential rules to schools that have multiple types of facilities, if that makes sense to you, so.
Absolutely. Do you need that in the form of a motion?
It can -- doesn't have to be a formal motion, but if you just want to say that if you, if there's a consensus of you that thinks that's something that's a worthwhile project, or those two items, and--
I see lots of heads going up and down, so.
Okay, then those are two things. Dustin's an expert on wind energy, and he's chomping at the bit, so he's trying to be an expert.
Well, your research, be checking out also what other cities and that are doing and any associations possibly.
Well, yeah, I was actually on a panel last week. The Kansas City Managers Association had a panel they put together on wind zoning and wind energy that I spoke at, but there was a somewhat canned presentation in front of me that said, you know, here are the issues that come up in zoning, and here's some things from the wind energy industry of how you should address these. But, I mean, we have in our ordinance here, which is just, is kind of a model that says, well, if you have one of these, the noise level shall not exceed 60 decibels at the property line. City of Salina doesn't even own--
A decibel meter.
A decibel meter. So, okay, we're going to write that into the ordinance and say, all right, everybody should sleep better now because you know that the sound can't exceed 60 decibels. There's no way to measure it. So why would you write that in? And you talked about on the previous item about not looking at specific properties, but that's what I see as the flaw of a lot of these model ordinances that have been put out. If you don't drive it around or kick the tires a little bit, I mean, we could bring back a model ordinance for you next meeting and say, look, all these things we've addressed, and you could adopt them just like the one we have now, but then when you try to apply it to somebody's property, it doesn't work. So that's the next, I said, I said at the, when I spoke at that meeting, I said, we've had this on the books since 1979, and I've been here for 22 years, and I've never touched it. Because the minute you sit down with somebody to see if they could do something and start measuring out the setbacks to property lines and stuff based on height and rotor size, you know, well, you can do it, but your minimum setback is 385 feet from your property line. Doesn't work. I mean, it doesn't even work for some akin school sites. So, you know, that, it needs to be practical, but it also needs to take into account the setting you're in. And you might have one allowance for a large school or church site, and so there are constant changes in the technology, and that's part of what Dustin is doing, is trying to put together examples and photos and different things. There's, everybody thinks of a wind turbine as a three-bladed thing that spins like that. There's all different, there's vertical ones, there's ones that you can put on a roof, there's spirals, there's all kinds of things, and we just have to educate ourselves and you about that to make sure that we can account for all of them.
No, I just have one other quick question, so if we're done with this.
Yeah.
Okay. Have I missed it? We had a committee that was looking into soil erosion practices around development sites and--
Best management practices and all that stuff.
Yeah.
You haven't missed anything other than that train went off the tracks--
Okay.
-- and needs to get back on.
Okay. And the only reason I say that is, I think it's wonderful if staff wants to look into this, and I just don't know if at some point there's too much on your plate, and so some things are diverted, and if we've started one thing--
Well, that one is not, that's not on planning's plate. We tried to be responsible about it and do that way, but that one particularly is not. And actually, we had a study session for Thanksgiving with junkyards and salvage yards and licensing requirements that matched our zoning, and salvage operators are on board, and the city commission's on board, and so I think that one will be taken off the plate.
Okay.
And so we have a lot of material on this wind energy stuff. We just need a kick in the pants to do it, and by you saying, let's initiate a change that gives us an application and a deadline to present something and doesn't allow us to put it on the back burner, and it shouldn't be on the back burner. So, yeah, there's a lot of things on the plate, but since I got junkyards off my plate, I feel much better, so.
Well, we want you to feel better at the end of the year.
So, yeah, we don't feel overwhelmed by that. We just, we just need to have that. I mean, we, and I don't think she's doing as well as we thought, but, I mean, it's just like the hot dog lady. When something like that comes up, we can, we can come up with something, and so she--
That's the word, the name hot dog lady?
That's what I call her. I think she has a real name, but the, I don't know that things have gone quite as well as, maybe we as a staff haven't gone out and patronized her place enough, but she sent us a menu the other day to remind us that she's still out there, so.
That's nice. I'd just like to say at our last meeting of the year that I enjoy very much the packets that we get, and I am never at a loss for impartial information. I think that we get a tremendous amount of stuff. And John, I have to really say that, one over at Marymount College, I really enjoyed that architectural dissertation on the building. I enjoyed that very much, so.
And the pictures that we get are--
Yeah, I think--
Even when you go out to the site, which I try to do for everything, seeing the pictures like you do them is very helpful.
I think it really facilitates discussion and probably even more so with the Board of Zoning Appeals than it does with the planning commission, because the things you deal with are so property-specific--
Yeah.
-- that really helps. If this room was just set up a little better so it wasn't over here distant, and I'm always sitting here talking, wondering what's on the screen behind me, because I don't often know. So the only thing we have to add is that we do have--
It'd be a little shorter, too, yeah.
Cookies and other refreshments over here if you want to grab one before you leave tonight, and we just want to thank you for your faithful service and coming out on a cold day. At least it wasn't last Tuesday, so.
Yes, yeah. We are adjourned.